Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM, May 9th, 2024, and I'd like to welcome everyone in the room and those participating online as I called a meeting of the Belbro- Uger Creek Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input and have made sure to dedicate a portion of this meeting to hear from you. We look forward to your comments during that time as indicated on our agenda. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Dr. Pryor. Mr. Price is absent.
All right, we have a quorum. If you're able, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Liming, Treasurers' report.
Took in a motion to approve the meeting held April 11th amendments.
Mrs. Dorn, then Dr. Pryor. Questions, corrections? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn? Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
And Dr. Pryor? Took in a motion to approve the amendments of the meeting held April 25th.
Mrs. Anderson and then Dr. Pryor? Same? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
You have, with your agenda, the budget comparisons, the cash summary report, the revenue and expenditure pie charts. Nothing really stands out to report tonight. Is there, are there any questions about any of those financial reports dated April 30th? Not, that's, that's all I have.
That's all for that? Okay. We move into five-year forecast, then?
Well, we need to take a vote to approve the.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good, okay. So can I get a motion, please? We don't have one yet for the Treasurers' report.
Second?
Mrs. Dorn, and then seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Okay, now please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Okay, the five-year forecast tonight is the update of the original five-year forecast that we approved at the November meeting. This one has to be filed by the, uh, May 31st with the Ohio Department of Education. And, uh, wanted to say a couple, just a couple of comments. It is, it shows a positive balance for all five years, uh, very solid financially. We, we included in this one, because you have to include something to make a forecast, included a state funding freeze, because that's what's happened for years, pretty much. A little bit up, a little bit down, basically a freeze with this district. And a 1% increase in real estate revenues other than this current year where it was, uh, we saw the results of reappraisal of property values in Green County. So reappraisal year, it's usually higher, and then I went conservative on the rest of it, just with a 1% increase. This forecast also, I wasn't real sure how to do this, but I included both master agreements that are to be approved later in the evening. So for some reason, the board does not approve the agreements with SCA and SLASP. I'll have to get some new numbers and approve another forecast, uh, because I included those. I figured that would be better than not including it, and then it would be way off if, if those are approved. Think that's probably about all. I also included the assumptions, so if you want any details about how I got one, one line item or one particular cell, it would be included in those assumptions, most likely. Did anyone have any questions about this? The forecast always includes three years of history, then the current year we're in now, and four years to the future.
I feel like you're being just a little bit humble. I mean, unless I misunderstood the numbers, it seems like we're even in a little bit stronger position than we were at our last six-month forecast. So kudos to you. I think it's awesome to be able to say that we're in a very, very strong financial position. Yep, so thank you.
Thank you. But my, my part of that's fairly small. I report. And I invest the money, that's one thing I do.
Yeah.
I'll go with that.
Well, it's a good point. I mean, it's a team effort. I mean, thanks to, you know, Dr. Kozad's leadership, the administration's leadership, still being in a very, very strong fiscal position, been able to do a lot of good here recently. I mean, it's been a priority of the board, hearing the needs of the teachers to hire to keep class sizes low. That, that's been a priority, I'm happy to do that. Adding new positions, new intervention specialist at the middle school, new full-time SRO, really good stuff. So awesome report, great to hear.
So then we need a vote to approve that.
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the five-year forecast? Dr. Pryor, and then Mrs. Anderson. Any other questions, comments? All right, please take the roll.
Okay, Dr. Pryor? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
All right, as I move to another page, anything else, sir, from the Treasurer?
No.
All right, thank you much. Uh, that takes us to correspondence. Did anybody receive anything that you'd like to share with the rest of the board?
I suspect the rest of you may have received this, but because.
Audrey, I'm sorry to interrupt, can you turn your mic on? Or, oh.
Yeah, I might.
Eh?
And it's not. Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, I suspect the rest of you received this because it appears this went to all board members of a number of school districts and probably to superintendents and treasurers as well. But I received an email from Mike Broadwater, who's the superintendent from Loveland Schools, and this was co-signed by Loveland's treasurer as well. Did you all, did you all receive this? Or you might, I think it probably, maybe they just went to then presidents and vice presidents, I don't know. Um, I'll read you a snippet. Basically, what it's saying is that Loveland is a, a school district similar to ours in that, um, they are hoping to petition the state to better look out for districts like ours, and there is, there are 54 that they identified that are on the, what's the right word for it?
Guarantee.
On the, on this, on the guarantee. So it says fewer than 9% of districts are on the state funding guarantee, not on the 20 mil funding floor, and do not have a school district income tax. So they identified 54 districts that are in that situation. We are one of them, and they are hoping to start collectively lobbying Ohio lawmakers for a 3.5%, basically just an inflationary adjustment of, adjustment of the guarantee. It wouldn't mean a super, and they even broke it out, they did, they really did their homework. So, I mean, from the looks of this, kudos to, um, Loveland. But they even broke it out, they said that if this were to happen, a 3.5% adjustment, and I assume this would be annual, for us, that would look like roughly 140K. I mean, it's not nothing, it's not huge, but they, they did all the math for everyone. But they want folks to kind of respond to a Google form, just joining their effort. I think of this at least bears looking into. And I kind of thought that Mr. Price, one, because he's not here, and two, because he's really, probably the most knowledgeable of all of us on these topics, would probably be the best person to engage with Loveland and see, get all the details on this and see, um, you know, what this is all about. But to me, on, on the face of it, it seems like they're really trying to speak up for the small percentage of us, and it would really help us in the, in the sense that I think we are the only one in our county that has the situation. So it's hard for us to just, um, speak to our own lawmakers because we are one of very few in our area. But maybe if we band together statewide, maybe we will have a larger voice. So if you all agree to kind of maybe allow Dr. Kozad to pass this along to, um, Mr. Price and set him on his journey, because I think he's the, the, and of course, along with you, Kevin, to take a look at what they're doing, and if you agree, and report back to us, I guess.
So I can send the email to other folks on the board that didn't receive it, I'll send it also, and then I'll work with Mr. Price to see what, see if he's interested in that. Actually, this speaks to what Mr. Liming was saying during his five-year, during the five-year forecast, is those, not really any increases on the state funding, and so that ties right into this. This is what, that's what this is saying. We're not on the 20 mil floor, if we're on the 20 mil floor, you get automatic inflationary price or revenue increases to keep you on the 20 mil floor. So we are not on the 20 mil floor. So, um, so this speaks to what Mr. Liming was saying in the five-year forecast.
And we also don't have an income tax, which, as people's income goes up with inflation, that also affects school districts and gives them an inflationary adjustment. We don't have that either, so we remain stagnant. So, uh, something to look into, from the looks of it, it sounds like, you know, Loveland's really trying to get something going, so.
I would do that.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
I received a thank you card from the staff at Stephen Bell thanking us for the breakfast that was provided for them on Monday, so it was really sweet of them to give us that thank you card.
Anyone else? All right, means we get to move into our favorite meeting, some good news admission. Start with some of our excellent student athletes. Can we please call to the front, Taylor's going. Taylor is the 2024 Ohio Prep Sports Writers Association, all Ohio first school in girls' basketball. Did you want to say anything? And Jordan France. Now here, could, could you accept our behalf? Jordan is the 2024 Writers Association, all Ohio team honorable entry in girls' basketball. And sadly, we have a lot of retirees, but we want to honor you for sure. Thank you for your many, many years of service. I didn't plan this out, I don't know if you want to do one at a time, or if you want to stay up here and then get a group picture now later, we'll figure out as we go. But starting with Tom Bean. Mr. Bean has served for 28 years in our district. Say a few words, maybe introduce anybody that might have come with you.
Well, I guess if I, I'd like to recognize the district administration and the board for this honor. Thank you very much for, and I appreciate that. I'd like to thank my wife. I truly believe without her support, I probably would not be standing here today. And to the hundreds of teachers and staff and coaches and community members that I've had to fight for and work with for, believe it or not, 23 or 5 plus years, and I've been in this district either coaching, teaching, or I've fought for everything. And they have all made a impact on my life. It's great.
For 26 years of service, Claudia Farmards. Anything you'd like to share, or say?
I'd just like to say, thanks to my family, and of course you all. It's been the best job I've ever had.
24 years of service, Sharon Geis.
So I just want to say I'm grateful for this opportunity to have served our district for 24 years. 10 years as a third grade teacher, 14 years as a fifth grade teacher. I've met some amazing parents and incredible students over the years. It's been an honor to serve them. And, um, I just want to give a shout out to BCI. I feel like the administration and the teachers there, we are so blessed to have a selfless, dedicated, hardworking staff, and, um, they are a true asset to this district. I believe that in my heart. And, um, I will forever take with me the memories and experiences that I've had here. They have been wonderful, it's a great district to serve, so, thank you.
17 years of service, Nurse Iman Alis.
Well, they're limiting me on time, so. But 37 years of nursing, so I think it's time to, to move on to, to other things. I'd like to thank Jenny Kappenberger, Laura Gess, they're the goats. They were mentors for me and took a chance, hired me on part-time with Belfree, 17 years ago. So, but a great ride, I'd like to thank Anna Valley, Laura Gess, Kimmy Blatchett, fabulous people to work with. Administrators, we were having, I'm not sure they ever said no to us, which is pretty cool. I think our, um, the bar has been set pretty high with the nurses in our district for the rest of the calendar. People I think want to be like us, so. It's fabulous. the rest of the calendar, and people I think want to be like us, so, it's fabulous.
37 years of service, Lori Metzler.
I'm really nervous, but I do want to say that when I was young, I always, always wanted to be a teacher. I have five siblings and I always said, "Is Helen sitting at the table?" I'm just sure, I've been great. I've loved working this district. I have a son in another district, a daughter in a district, and a soon-to-be daughter-in-law in another district. And we by far have the best, the best staff, best kids, the best administrators that I've been lucky to work with. And our building's not so bad, but it's people crowd. I have people everywhere, you know, and even.
30 years of service, Catherine Sargent. Is Sargent here? Hello, round of applause. 40 years of service, Janice Sicker.
Guess that means I'm really old and wondering, former student has been recognized for retiring. Working 40 years in the district and living there the entire time, you touch students for the rest of your life. I mean, I'm Michael, former student, Karen, I.D., Tom, and I mean, tomorrow I'm working with a realtor who's a former student, my banker's a former student, I'm packing out of our room, yeah, owned by a former student and so, it's just such a nice place to live, small town, they take care of you and so, in my retirement, we have a foundation, Wayne Bank Foundation for BCI survivors and we need to continue to support us in that endeavor.
And 34 years of service, thank you ladies. Thank you so much, we appreciate it all.
Before all the teachers or anybody goes, hold on. Later in the meeting, or later in the meeting, we were going to have staff appreciation, but I thought, Ms. Dorn suggested, maybe we should do that right now and I thought that'd be much better, we do it right now while we have teachers in here, so, and other staff, you know, just, it's a total team effort of getting on the bus, safe and welcoming the environment, classroom teachers, administrators, cafeteria staff, everybody, custodians, everybody working together really is what makes this place special. Mr. Kinsey and I had a ceremony that we went to earlier in the week with honoring the valedictorians, salutatorians for all of Green County and as those kids were talking, they honored, you know, who they thought was their best teacher and really, the stories that they told could be any one of your stories, the impact you guys have on each and every student, so, really appreciate that. And it really, this really hits home that all those things that people don't see that you guys do on a, not a daily basis, not an hourly basis, not a half an hour, but like on a minute or second basis of just making a difference in all your kids and other staff members. So again, on behalf of the board, we really appreciate not only teachers during this week, nurses, administrators, support staff, everybody working together. So again, thank you and appreciate everybody.
With that, we will not be offended in any way. If anybody wants to hit up the dairy shed of the brewery, that's, maybe in that order. Oh yeah, I don't know, Henry, do you want folks to congregate maybe for a moment, or?
If you all aren't in the photo frame, if not, I'll draw a ring. Ooh, that clears off the room.
I know, if you all like.
Glad we're not on a boat. Not be good.
I was going to say, everybody's in the furthest rows away. Yeah. Okay, I think we're ready to move into reports to the board. Am I in the right spot? Okay. See Mrs. Keaton back there, is that okay?
You're up.
Mrs. Keaton?
Yep. So we'd like to welcome, like to welcome up Mrs. Keaton for a report to the board, all about the science of reading.
I think Mr. Conte was going to help.
He's going to plug, okay, that's right, yeah. Let's just, we'll just hang loose for a minute. You know, he told me that beforehand and I totally forgot, I'm sorry, Mrs. Keaton. Don't pull a hammy. Nope, Mrs. Keaton, please, or I guess whichever is easier. All right. Once again, we're very happy, we'd like to welcome Mrs. Keaton, here to give a report to the board on the science of reading. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you for having us this evening. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
All right. Well, it's been a fun-filled day at Stephen Bell Elementary. If you have not heard, we had our glow run at Stephen Bell and, let's see, Mrs. Hebrank and Mrs. Rose and I might be a little exhausted. I think I got in about five miles on my watch, oh, it's still going, my watch is still going, yes. And so, our fun run, fundraiser, we are about $27,000 profit right now and we have collected in all 50 states. So, I know, yesterday was Idaho, the only state that we didn't collect and today we collected from Idaho, so shout out to Idaho, somebody out there knows us. Well, tonight we're here to talk about the science of reading and for those five people that are watching online, I'm Ginger Keaton, the building principal. Tonight we also have Heather Hebrank, thank you, school board, for approving her at the last board meeting to be our future assistant principal at Stephen Bell. Tonight she's here actually to present some baseline data and also spring data in regards to being a second grade teacher. And then Paige Rose is here tonight to talk about being a second grade teacher as well as the grade level ELA rep and then she also serves on the district ELA team. And then we have our literacy coach here, very, very proud to have our literacy coach, Becca Campbell, and it's the first time that we've ever had a literacy coach at Stephen Bell and I've been at Stephen Bell for 17 years. So, we would like to talk about the science of reading tonight. Oh, I have the mouse. All right. So what is the science of reading? Well, as we know, teaching reading is very complex, but it doesn't have to be that difficult when we think about how to teach five to eight-year-olds how to read when you have a very talented staff of teachers. Many years ago, our curriculum director, Mrs. Gann and I and teachers in our building had the opportunity to go to Montgomery County ESC and we learned about the five powers? The big five? And we were trying to figure out what is that? They talked about vocabulary, they talked about fluency, but then we kept hearing rumblings at the state that something was coming. And of course, they were talking about the science of reading, but it really didn't have a name then. So we were learning that it was the body of a scientifically-based research about reading and issues related to reading and writing. When the five pillars of reading emerged, we had the opportunity to look at how can we analyze our data and how can we instruct and assess to improve student growth? And that is something that we do at Stephen Bell really well, we always have. So we wanted to take a dive into what does the science of really, reading really mean and how can we continue to incorporate reading strategies at Stephen Bell? So I'm not just going to give you a definition about science of reading, but we want to take you a journey through the science of reading at Stephen Bell. But before we do that, I want to make sure we dispel any of the myths about the science of reading. It is not just focused on phonics. It is not an isolated program. All students do not have the same experience. Stephen Bell teachers know it is very differentiated. We don't want it to be less engaging, we want to make sure that students are having joy in reading, we want to make sure students are feeling motivated. That was one of the things we were worried about. How is reading a decodable engaging? And you might be thinking, what's a decodable? Well, it could be a black and white book and you're thinking, that's not going to be fun. Kids are really motivated by a lot of technology. There's a way, our teachers have found a way to make it engaging. All of that is done through explicit instruction. So who are the students at Stephen Bell? A lot of kindergartners this year, 193 of them. First grade, 184, second grade, 223, really big kindergarten and second grade class. I think Lori Metzler was alluding to some of that in second grade, big class sizes in second grade. Thankfully, Dr. Cozad is going to help with that next year, we're keeping that ninth teacher in second grade to reduce those class sizes and thank you to the school board for that. Who are the teachers that are helping with the science of reading? 26 grade-level teachers, two reading specialists and four intervention specialists. The reason I'm sharing this with you is because that explicit intervention and instruction is so important, this slide is going to be relevant as we go through the presentation When we look at the simple view of reading, this is where the five pillars are broken down. The most important part of this graphic organizer is the multiplication sign. And right now, I kind of feel like I'm having a staff meeting, because my staff's right here and they're probably thinking, well, here goes Mrs. Keaton again, she's up there presenting, but at least I'm not dancing right now or wearing a glow jacket or a sequins jacket, because we know I like to do that. Well, if we look at word recognition, what we're talking about here, we're looking at phonemic awareness and phonics. And when we think about phonemic awareness, we're thinking about letters, we're talking about mo, or excuse me, we're talking about working with letters, we're talking about what are we noticing and just that basic awareness. When we're looking at phonics, decoding, spelling, we're looking at how two letters can make a sound, how we are putting letters together, and then we are building our fluency. Then when you're looking at language comprehension, you're looking at some text read alouds, we're looking at text to maximize our vocabulary, we're looking at discussions, we're looking at writing connections through our standards. We cannot have word recognition without language comprehension. If you do a simple equation, one times zero, what is that equal? Zero. No reading comprehension is going to happen. The flip, if you do zero word recognition times one, what is it equal? Still zero. That's why the multiplication sign is there. You have to have both parts in order for reading comprehension to happen. So in order for all of this to come into play, we have to have the resources and we have to have the motivation and the collaboration and we have to analyze our data. That's what we do really well at Stephen Bell. Don't we, Mrs. Hebrank? we're looking at how two letters can make a sound, how we are putting letters together, and then we are building our fluency. Then, when you're looking at language comprehension, you're looking at some text read alouds. We're looking at text to maximize our vocabulary. We're looking at discussions. We're looking at writing connections through our standards. We cannot have word recognition without language comprehension. If you do a simple equation, 1 times 0, what is that equal? Zero. Nope, reading comprehension is going to happen. The flip, if you do 0, word recognition, times 1, what is it equal? Still 0. That's why the multiplication sign is there. You have to have both parts in order for reading comprehension to happen. So, in order for all of this to come into play, we have to have the resources, and we have to have the motivation and the collaboration, and we have to analyze our data. That's what we do really well at Stephen Bell. Don't we, Mrs. Hebrank?
Yes.
Here we go.
All right. So, as you can kind of see on this first slide here, this is a classroom teacher's data, that what it looks like after the fall assessments. So, there are four quadrants that we kind of look at. This right column here is all high achievement, and this left column is low achievement. So, when we look across the board here, obviously we can see within this quadrant, or this four, that we see quite a few down here in these bottom two quadrants. So, obviously, the most important thing when we're looking at data is growth. We want to see growth in students, even our high-achieving students and our low-achieving students. We always want to focus on that growth. And based on this, we kind of use this data to kind of guide our instruction, and we always use this instructional data to drive that. What are we doing in the classroom? What things are we looking at? So, that's kind of my next slide. So, after we kind of gather that data, that initial fall data, when students take their map, here are some of the data points that we use. So, currently, we are using, to kind of guide some instruction, our map data, obviously, our foundations data. So, as you can see here, each teacher, after we teach a foundations unit, will go through, and we will collect the data on each child, and we'll look at where are the holes, are there patterns, are we seeing things where we need to have some more interventions? Does it need more small group? Do we need to look at maybe possible Tier Two interventions? So, this really is a strategic way for us to really look at our data. Geodes, small group and formal data. So, our geodes is our program where we meet in small groups with students. We really work on the skills that we've practiced, our phonics instruction that we've practiced, that direct instruction, and we use that with decoding and blending. And then we also have summative assessments, obviously, with comprehension, things of that nature that we use, formative assessments, our daily checks, our exit tickets, things of that nature. We also actually had our dyslexia screener for the first time this school year. So, as you can see here, this is kind of some of that information where students were flagged or not flagged, and our data was great with that. We really showed, and Mrs. Keaton might be able to speak to this better for our building-wide, but we really were not surprised by students. We were already tracking students who we felt like might have this. So, we were very pleased with the data that came back from that, showing that Stephen Bell was already looking at data, and how we're using that to guide our instruction. So then, using all of that throughout the year, then we go back and we take it again in the spring. So, as you can kind of see, yet again, here we have, now our students are in that upper quadrant, and most are up in this top corner. So, again, when you use data to drive that instruction, and you're using that science of reading with fidelity, and looking at data, looking at student outcomes, looking at the teachers doing their quality checks, and artisan teacher, and things of that nature, you can see that this data is driven, and it's, and it's high-achieving data. So, even our students that were high-achievers, even our students who were low-achieving, I mean, now at this point, we only have a few down in the bottom. So, thank you.
Okay. So, with the science of reading, we have adopted two programs that we are currently using. So, foundations, we adopted two years ago, and it is a structured literacy approach that is grounded in the science of reading. It focuses on using research-based methods that teach structured reading, spelling, and handwriting, and it really uses those multisensory techniques for students. And so, these are some of the materials that we use. In second grade, we have gel boards, which the kids love, and that really helps them with that multisensory technique, because they are skywriting. So, great research shows that when they are saying it and using the hand motion, it helps the brain remember it more. So, we use those. And then we also have magnetic tiles. So, not only are we using whiteboards, but they're also using tiles. So, just different ways to practice those skills that we are using. And what foundations looks like in the classroom. So, it is a 30- to 40-minute whole-group lesson. Forty minutes is usually more second grade, because those lessons just continue to build. And we always start with a warm-up to practice some of those previous skills taught. Right here, you can see one of my students is being the drill leader, which they love with baby Echo. So, it's just really engaging. So, I'm modeling for them, and then they're also modeling to their peers. Rarely do I any, do I ever have any student skip being the drill leader. They love it. And so, then we go into teaching some new concepts, and then after new concepts are taught explicitly, it provides opportunities for students to then practice those skills through multisensory techniques that I previously mentioned. And then this year, we adopted geodes, which are those decodable texts. So, if it's decodable, it means that 80% of the book, they are able to decode. They are able to break down those sounds and sound them out. And so, like we said, decodables might sound like they're not very fun, but the geodes my kids have been loving this year. They've had interesting topics that they might not have experienced before. Second grade, which a couple of my second-grade colleagues are here. Cranberry Crop was one of the first books, and my students were obsessed with it. It talked about like how cranberries are harvested in a bog, and we got to watch videos on how they're harvested, and they just loved it. And it wouldn't have something that they would have experienced, and it was a decodable text. Recently, we were reading about the West and the Oregon Trail, and how settlers went there and things like that, and the gold rush, and all these interesting topics that they really are just engaged into. And so, with the geodes, they are completely aligned with foundations, which has been great, because those skills that they're learning in foundations, then we get to practice them in small group. And so, we do these during small group instruction, during our love-to-read literacy rotations. And this year, we have focused on three different groups: an accuracy group, a fluency group, and a comprehension group, which aligns with the science of reading. And Becca has been really great at helping our team with lesson plans for each of those groups. So, they are differentiated and specialized for what those students need, and we base that off of that foundations data as well. So, we're using all of that data to really drive our instruction, and it just really helps with reinforcing those skills that they're learning. So, we've been really happy with these two programs, and down there is just a couple of the texts that we've been reading, so.
I know we're using a lot of teacher jargon, so to break it down in simplicity, foundations, phonics. Hegarty is not up here, but Hegarty is a program that helps with phonemic awareness. Okay? So, that's one of the pillars. And then geodes helps with vocabulary and comprehension. So, all of this helps, the Five Pillars. But none of this comes alive without the talented educators in the building. That's what is the magic. And all of that comes back cumulative when you're reviewing your data, because data means nothing unless you do something with it and analyze it. That's the most crucial element. So, with that being said, spring data is what drives my fuel, because the staff knows, when people talk data, it's like my love language. I'm like, oh, yes. Give me a graph. Let me analyze it. And then I look at this, and I go, oh, oh, staff, we have BLT on Monday. I'm working on the agenda. Because I look at this, and I go, oh, yes, high achievement, high growth. Do you see this? Second grade, pat yourself on the back. Second grade has made it into that top box. I mean, school board, you should be elated. Look at this. Yes. This is fabulous news. And then first grade, you were right there, first-grade teachers. You were right on the line. And then kindergarten, you're so close. But then, as the administrator, I have to look at that and go, hmm, why is kindergarten not with their peers? We're going to analyze that. We're going to break that down, because we want everybody up there with high achievement and high growth. That's my responsibility. And so, we definitely don't want to be low achievement, low growth. But what that does say, low growth, okay, we have potential. We can make that movement. So, what more can we do? And that's what we do at Stephen Bell. We analyze that. So, we know that literacy is the language of opportunity. We know that children who start behind often stay behind. But what we also know in Bellbrook Sugar Creek is that our parents devote time and money to preschool. We are very fortunate that our children come to kindergarten generally prepared. And our KRA, our scores, are typically the highest in the county. So, we have students that are typically more prepared than other school districts. So, that affords us a little bit more of a head start, but then that also challenges us, that we need to make sure that we have high standards, and we're going to continue to elevate those high standards. And that's where our literacy coach comes into play, because it's been a very busy year for Mrs. Keaton and 609 children. And so, Becca has been instrumental in helping in this process. And Mrs. Dorn, you look like you have a question. I, I'm going to.
Bring this meeting to order.
I, I like that gamble. Well. It is, and I can help you understand that, can't I? Because you would have less differentiation. Yes. We'll carry on.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am Becca Campbell. Heather is passing out the graphic that I created on Canva. I've never used Canva, so this is my first time using it. And this is just kind of a snapshot of my work here at Stephen Bell this year. I'll just kind of briefly go over what my role has been there and how that has played out for teachers. So, the purpose of my role at Stephen Bell was to help support literacy initiatives, one of which being implementing the new curriculum geodes, which aligns with foundations. So, I'll just kind of briefly go over this. The first quarter, I, actually, before I do this, I have to acknowledge, I know this is at the bottom, but I have to acknowledge the leadership of Ginger and Betsy, and also acknowledge the staff for allowing me into their classroom to really dig deep and talk about their, they own their data. So, going into a classroom and talking about their data with somebody that they hardly know is very challenging, and they welcomed me with open arms, and they were open-minded and very willing to accept support from somebody from the outside. So, this would not have been successful without the leadership of administration and the teachers at Stephen Bell. So, thank you. First quarter, the goal was to really get in and build relationships. So, the way that I did that, or the way that Ginger allowed for me to do that, was to be in the classroom and just observe, get to know the building, get to see the culture of Stephen Bell, how these teachers run their read rotations. From there, the goal was to support teachers to plan and implement their geodes. This was new for them, so we kind of, each grade level was a little bit different in how they felt they wanted to implement this and what that would look like for them. So, I kind of took the lead of the teachers, and at the end, I was able to collaborate with each team, kindergarten through second. And then teachers have a template to refer back to where they ended up creating lessons with their team, and now they'll have those for next year. Second quarter, we really looked into that quadrant report that you saw on the map data. That was mostly for first and second, because kindergarten does not have that previous data to pull from. And we looked at the low-achieving, low-growth, so that bottom-left-hand quadrant, and we had some really detailed conversations as to how we can push those kids, talk about, do we need to pull them one-on-one? Do they need to go to reading club that we didn't realize before? What can we do in the small group to help meet their needs? And then the third and fourth quarter was really looking at meeting with teachers in a one-on-one small-group setting, where I would go and watch their small group. And then I was actually trained by Mike Rutherford for Artisan Teacher, and I know that that is a goal of the district. So, a goal of mine was to give teachers 30-second feedback in written form after I observed. And then we had follow-up meetings where I modeled the craft conversations from Artisan Teacher. So, I was able to really pull out some positive feedback for teachers, and also open the floor for discussion about how we could best serve their students. Through all of these, this timeframe, in the middle of all of those meetings, the geodes are really meant to be a knowledge-building set of texts, where decodables like Dick and Jane are very dry. Geodes have a lot more background knowledge that students can gain from that and vocabulary, and there is an entire room full of books that are sitting there, that were leveled readers, Fountas and Penel books, that are no longer being used. So, we thought, what too low in the leveled reading. They're more of predictable texts, and it would not, would not align with, with the focus of the science of reading. At the end of all of my work, I gave just a quick feedback survey, and I highlighted a couple of the ones that I felt were the most positive. 94.4% of teachers felt that coaching provided positive feedback to help improve practice and grow as a teacher. And 88.9% of teachers felt that literacy coaching has been valuable at helping with curriculum implementation. So, again, I just really, I've really enjoyed my time here at Stephen Bell, and I look forward to working further with Bellbrook.
Thank you.
So, I don't want to take too much more of your time, but I do want to just highlight each grade level and go through what we looked at with the quintiles, because the quintile reports is something that we analyze each time through the map growth and achievement, and broke it down where you can actually see the colors. That will really wake us up. And when you look at the growth and achievement by grade, so this is something our BLT is going to talk about on Monday, and we're going to look at the strengths analysis, and then what could we do to help drive our instruction going into next year? Because these students, obviously, are going to be first-grade students next year. When we have our back-to-school instruction, back-to-school intervention, we're going to need to look at what we're doing with these students. But then also, what will we do differently for the students that are coming into kindergarten? So, what's happening with the increase of students falling within the red and the orange quintiles? What's going on there? Work with my BLT representative, Mrs. Huff. Talk about what's going on. Is that happening more in second semester? We're still struggling with the difference in our programs. We've had that discussion with Ms. Gann, with Dr. Cozad, and it is something, I mean, full transparency. We are struggling with the purple and the gold and the five-day program. I mean, today was a perfect example. We had the Glow Run. When you just think of a fun event, it was a gold day. Purple kids weren't there. And you think about, oh, my gosh, the kids in the purple program, they need to have a fair opportunity to attend. So, we made sure they were invited. We only had five that came. So, the next opportunity that we're going to have, we're going to make sure that event is scheduled on a day for the students that attend on a purple day. So, just those little things. And then when you think academically, there, there could be things that are missing. So, the difference in the program is something I'm always going to encourage you as a board. What could we do better? If it's not five-day-for-all, because I know that's a big expense, and I honor that that's a big expense. I know that. But what is something that we could do? And I'm always willing to look at the schedule, look at ways that we could do something more for kindergarten. And what could we do that we're not doing for kindergarten that we do for first and second grade? So, in my 31 years of education, I never do every, any year the same. So, that's something that we need to discuss, because if kindergarten's not there yet, let's get them up there. So, let's celebrate. So let's celebrate that the blue eightieth percentile and above did increase. And that's the hardest quintile to improve in because those kids are already really high. So when you improve that percentile, kudos to the kindergarten teachers because that's a really hard quintile to improve in. First grade, they did the exact same thing. They took that blue 80% quintile and increased that from 19% to 27%. That's pretty amazing. And then in the green, they did the exact same thing, increased it from 19 to 29%. So they had the top two quintiles, the hardest quintiles, to improve, and they killed it. Awesome first grade teachers. So then that makes me think, could we leverage some of the support for kindergarten? But I don't want to take away from first grade, but how could we mirror some of the things that we're doing? We have the luxury now of working with our literacy coach for the first year. So what strategies have we learned this year that we could implement for next year? What are some of those other variables that we struggle with? And that is, we have people that don't send their children to our kindergarten program. So I don't know if the board is aware, but it is a historical trend in my 17 years at Stephen Bell, that we typically have at least 22 kids that don't attend our kindergarten program and they join us in first grade. And that's 22 kids that haven't had our way of instruction. And typically their data is a little bit behind our students' data. Not all the time, but typically the data does reveal that. So that is another variable that we always look at. And second grade, second grade teachers are doing a fantastic job with their data. They also had a huge increase in their sixtieth percentile while the blue percentile remained extremely high. And we know in second grade that we're doing a lot of support in the encoding, which is the writing, because we are helping the third-grade colleagues getting ready for their writing for the OST, and that's something that we're doing across the district, K to 12. So all of that is important in the science of reading. And you're thinking, but I thought you were just going to tell us the definition. Oh, no, way more than that. So the growth is always important, as Heather Hebrink said. We want to be better today than yesterday, better tomorrow than today. When we think about all the assessments that we have at Stephen Bell, we've, we've been rich in data, rich in assessments. We don't have the OST, but we have a lot of data that leads us to drive instruction at Stephen Bell. The MAP assessments, the foundations tracker, we have a lot of progress monitoring going on in-house, and our students know how to set goals. They know that growth is important. All of our teachers now have the dyslexia screener preparation with the MAP fluency and the module training. Was it 18 hours? 18 hours? And we know that for the dyslexia training, we are not diagnosing dyslexia. We've been very clear with parents about that. And the great thing that we discovered by doing the dyslexia screener is that we really didn't have any surprises at Stephen Bell. The students that were flagged were already receiving support at Stephen Bell. So we thank you for your time this evening, and we're really proud of the work that the students are learning and growing and having a great time at Stephen Bell. Really proud of my staff, and together the staff family is prospering. And great picture of talent, Twin Day the other day. So if you don't have any questions, we'll let you move on with your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I didn't really know much about the science of reading, and that all sounds so fun, but I want to be in that class. Really fun, I think you did a fabulous job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I also want to say thanks, you know, for your leadership, Ms. Gann's leadership, but also as we, you know, say in Focus three, the 20 square feet, everyone's a leader. The teachers in the classrooms are taking leadership responsibilities effectively, implementing the program. I think it's really strong implementation. That goes with the team effort and thank you, Becca, of your leadership from Montgomery County ESC, who we contracted with for literacy specialists. And it is very, it is very challenging to come in cold to a school and build those relationships. So kudos to you and kudos to the staff for, for accepting and honoring and professionalism of having these professional conversations. That can be difficult and challenging, but push, push us to, to be even better. So appreciate everybody's leadership in this. I think it's paying off already, it's going to continue to pay off, especially as kids get older and they have even more difficult texts of being able to really sound out those difficult words as they get to BCI and so forth, and those other disciplines, sciences, really difficult words in science, to have the skills to be able to effectively sound those out rather than just guessing. So really appreciate the strong implementation.
Thank you.
I want to add to that, since you all are here. Thank you so much. I'm so impressed, I continue to be. I appreciate Stephen Bell and all of your efforts. You've done a fantastic job with implementation. This is their third year with the science of reading. Peggerty, the Phrenemic Awareness Program, and then Foundation, second year. And we're about to take on another big challenge because Ohio passed legislation saying you must implement the science of reading. And they even came out with a list of approved curriculum, and we were on it. So the things that have been implemented over the last three years are on the list, thank goodness. And so we're getting ready to continue to build that out and kind of complete the pillars, that structure. And they'll rise to the occasion again. So just one more little piece, little piece, to add to the puzzle and, yeah, we're going to keep calling it a little piece. It's all psychology. We'll do it. Because this time next year, you'll be like, oh, it went so well. All right, on to another exciting topic, textbooks. We talked a little bit about engaging text. This presentation, though, is super short and sweet. I don't have any data to share with you tonight, but we have a couple of what we call sort of one-offs. Not a big formal curriculum adoption this time, sort of some loose ends. One loose end from a prior science adoption. I'll go ahead and click the slide here. You'll remember back last year, gosh, it feels like yesterday, we adopted science materials for most all of the district. And this was just a refresher on science philosophy work that our science teachers worked on vertically, kind of coming up with the vision as they developed some strategies for what they'd be looking for in curriculum materials for their classroom. So the, the quote there, I won't read it to you, but I'd like to start with that. Relative to the one science book we have tonight, and just to kind of walk through the need, the reason that I'm here tonight presenting the two books to you, we have two AP books to consider. We do have a course requirement through college boards, so there is an AP course audit. Every year I have to sign off on that, a district commitment to honor certain bullet points. We will support the teacher with appropriate professional development. We'll ensure that students have access to current textbooks within 10 years, that's the rule. We'll ensure that teachers and students have online or digital. We'll ensure that we have lab equipment available as needed, depending on the course that they're taking, et cetera. We'll ensure equitable access to AP tests if we have students that may demonstrate a financial need. Those kinds of things we sign off on as a high school that offers AP. And then whenever we have a new course, the teacher submits a syllabus describing their commitment that has to align to the AP standards. And then I sign off on that. And again, our statement of support for the teacher, just like I mentioned, that we would provide those supports to them, including professional development. So the AP Biology book I mentioned, the 10-year kind of rule, that one is eight years old. And we've had one science standards update in Ohio. Instruction is aligned to the 2019 Ohio Science Standards, but the textbook is eight, eight years old. And new textbooks certainly assist teachers in lots of time savings. It's very helpful when your textbooks are more current, obviously, and aligned to the current standards. So those are things that will be very helpful to both teachers. The AP Psychology course was approved with the Bellebrook High School Course of Study, probably December, January-ish, I think, is when those things come to you. So we're excited about that course. There's a lot of student interest. I know they've got a great demand for that course. And Ms. Stephanie Tomlin will be teaching that course. Prior to this, she had a semester kind of survey of psychology course. So thank you for supporting that course. Now it's time to ask for a book to go along with that. So the textbook review, we follow, as you know, this protocol for all the events that happened before tonight. We have a textbook review for members of the board so that you can be up to date on the process teachers have gone through to review different textbooks and what they've kind of decided to recommend to me, to administration, and therefore to the board. And they go through a rigorous process, including filling out rubrics so that they're objectively comparing multiple textbooks. And so the board has an opportunity to review their top two choices, maybe top three, depending on the subject area. That occurred April 1st through the 4th, as you're familiar with. And then on April 29th and 30th, we opened that up to the public, including parents, anyone from the community that would like to come in and take a look at what we're considering tonight. And those two textbooks were available to the public during that time period or by appointment. I was open to that, and we did have someone take advantage of that opportunity as well. So we had three community members that took advantage of that opportunity, which I appreciate. And the books are over there on display tonight as well. Let's see. And then tonight, that brings us to my ask for the proposal to adopt the two textbooks. The first one is entitled Psychology by Pearson. It's the sixth edition, copyright 2021. And the second one is Biology in Focus, Pearson Education, again, AP edition, the fourth edition, which just came out. So that, that was new for us. Short and sweet. Do you have any questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
And maybe it's for Mr. Gann, just I should remember this, but the new psychology course, is that, is there still going to be the lower-level psychology course?
Semester.
And then also AP?
There will still be a semester course available on that. Would be your long-term class review.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'll take a moment, just, I want to say thank you. I appreciate your support of the transparency initiative, doing the reviews. I'm sure it's extra work on you, and so I wanted to take a moment and say thank you. Flexibility, I know you let me take a book home for the night, brought it back in the same condition it was in, so I'll get there. But really, thank you for doing all that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Really appreciate it. She let me come in a few times.
Yeah.
It was very, very nice and helpful.
Thank you.
Yep, and thank you to you and Mr. Reinhardt and Ms. Tomlinson that just put a lot of effort into this. And thank you to you, I found out that you let a community member take the book home overnight. That's amazing that you just, that that transparency was there, so I really appreciate it.
It's no problem. Thank you so much for acknowledging that. And I also want to thank the teachers, Mr. Reinhardt, Ms. Tomlin. It takes a while, this is no joke, when you go through curriculum, as you know, I mean, you've spent time, all of you, and I appreciate that, that everyone did do their due diligence, and I appreciate it. So it takes all of us working together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that moves us out of reports to the board and into open communication period. Your thoughts and comments are very welcome during this time. When given the floor, please share your name, address, and any group affiliation you hold, if it's relevant. Thank you. You will then have five minutes for your comments, which should be directed toward the presiding officer, who tonight happens to be me. This time is generally for the board to listen and absorb, and as such, traditionally, a dialogue is not created in this moment. In case you're wondering, the reason for these policies, I've only read a few parts of them, which can be read in their entirety on the district's website in policy number 169 dot 91, is to ensure that as many people as possible have the opportunity to speak and that everyone is treated equally and fairly. So with that, I would like to welcome Rachel Mansfield. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Rachel Mansfield, and I live on Clearview Court in Bellebrook. I'm here because last year, like many parents, I was surprised when I heard there was a controversy regarding Biology in Focus. As a parent who's also a biologist, the quality of science education available to my children is very important to me. I've taught at college-level introductory biology, and the classes I taught used Biology in Focus as the text. In fact, Biology in Focus, along with its big brother book, Campbell's Biology, are the most common intro bio books used at the undergraduate level. And a quick internet search showed that the same is true for APIO. So I appreciated the opportunity when it came up to review this edition, the new edition of Biology in Focus, so I went in to go look at it. The great thing about science is that we're always learning new things that contribute to the larger body of knowledge. And as we learn, the scientific consensus shifts and adjusts to new discoveries. One reason this text is so widely used is because it's able to present the current consensus views in biology in a way that's accessible to students that are new to the subject without oversimplifying things by ignoring the nuances in the subject matter. We don't need to underestimate our kids' abilities to think critically and to integrate new material, especially in the context of their own experiences and knowledge that are both provided by their education but also by us at home. I'm here to express my support for this text as someone who's used it before, and I'm also here to express support for the text choices of our teachers, who are the professionals that are working really hard in our classrooms to provide top-notch instruction as they're preparing our kids for future successes. These are the experts who know what tools they need in the classroom to do this job well, so I just want to equip them in their classrooms with what they need to be effective, and I hope that you guys want to do that, too. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments tonight. Up next, Dr. Meredith Brenniger. Thank you so much for coming. You have five minutes.
Sure, thanks for having me. My name is Meredith Brenniger, and I live in Bellebrook. Before I launch into my prepared remarks, I want to say yes, please join with Loveland. We know that organized groups tend to have more power than individual voices, so I think that sounds like a great idea. I wanted to thank the district for allowing the community to review the textbooks up for adoption. I reviewed both AP Biology and Psychology books. To say that I did a comprehensive reading and cross-check of references would not be accurate. I mean, these books are quite large, and I did not take them home with me overnight. I spent more time looking at the Psychology books, since that's my area of expertise. I am a psychologist and have taught undergraduate psychology courses. When you are covering the entirety of psychology in one book, there will necessarily be more breadth than depth. I found that this book hit the right highlights and was readable. Is it a perfect book? No. I looked most closely at the chapter on psychological disorders. I'm a clinician. I found a factual error about anorexia. They listed diarrhea as a medical consequence, when any eating disorder expert will tell you it's the opposite, constipation. I found a few other things I disagreed with, including some jokes about weight gain. And when giving advice for maintaining a healthy lifestyle, they said to avoid processed foods and listed white potatoes. Well, I would never tell somebody to completely avoid processed foods, but to limit them, given the world we live in, or the cafeterias where we serve the food we serve, and a white potato is a whole food. But these kind of rigid statements like processed foods are bad, carbs are bad, are what can set eating disorders in motion. Further, after reviewing the list of recommendations for healthy eating and Further, after reviewing the list of recommendations for healthy eating and exercise, the author stated, quote, "If you are already engaging in regular and substantial amounts of moderate or vigorous physical activity, you may benefit by doing more. More isn't always better and can lead to injuries and compulsive exercising." Do I recommend voting down this book because of these criticisms? I do not. Here's why. One, selecting a textbook, it's kind of like buying a house. You will never find a perfect house. You go with the one that meets the most needs, including your most valued qualities. You will inevitably have shortcomings. My house is missing a coat closet on the first floor, which we did not realize until after we moved in, but the updated kitchen and the woodsy backyard make up for it. Now, I know some board members and at least one community member have previously expressed concerns about the way sex and gender are written about in the AP Bio book. I hope you will consider your vote tonight in the totality of the book, even if you disagree with tiny portions. Two, most of my qualms with the AP Psych book represent differing views on issues like eating and exercise, and I would have preferred more nuance in the book's health recommendations. But the solution for me lies in age-appropriate class discussions. You know, we don't have to mark out a line because we disagree with it. Let's talk about it. Maybe people have differing views, right? And isn't one of our district's core values to teach critical thinking rather than having them memorize content? I think this book provides that, whether through discussions over unsettled topics or the actual sections throughout both the Bio and Psych books labeled critical thinking, which helps students become responsible consumers of science and data, even if they don't go on to be science, to become scientists. Three, now my nitpicks about the sections on obesity and eating disorders, they pale in comparison to the risks found outside of an AP Psych textbook. Body shaming comments made in real life and the dark algorithms of TikTok, which are so easily accessible on all high schoolers' phones, they pose much greater risks than a few lines in an AP textbook. Fourth and finally, while I do bring expertise in psychology to my review, I don't teach AP Psychology day in and day out. And that's why I ultimately defer to the teachers and Director of Curriculum for selecting books that best meet their needs. Our district has a five-star rating, in large part because of our knowledgeable and dedicated teachers, some of whom are here tonight, though it gets fewer and fewer as the time goes on. Now this week, as we're aware, is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I gladly donated items for today's PTO luncheon at the middle school. And while I won't presume to speak for teachers, I suspect they would value respect for their teaching decisions more than donuts or meals. And in a perfect world, we'd give them both. I hope the board will vote to adopt both of the books up for review tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate you coming. All right, that's the end of our list, which will close our open communication period for tonight and move us into the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Consent agenda here for 7A, which is recommended approval of the following certificated license employment resignation leave of absence supplemental duty. And 7B, I can find, this is a big-
Long list.
Consent agenda here. B, Administrative Central Office Employment Resignation Leave of Absence. C, Support Staff Employment Resignation Leave of Absence. And D, Substitute Employment, including the summer custodial staff.
Do I have a motion to accept 7A, B, C, D as consent agenda?
Sum up.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Dr. Pryor.
Again, this is a typical, even though really long list, a typical time of the year where we renew our folks on supplemental contracts. It was just something we do every, every year. Those contracts are only for one year. They automatically non-renew. And then obviously, we hire vast, 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 vast majority of those people back. But those are always one-year contracts. And then other, that's the vast majority of the list. And then a couple other central office contracts. And then, again, the custodial staff for, for summer that will provide some extra custodial staff help.
Any questions for Dr. Cozad? Okay. Moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Dr. Pryor. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor.
Yes.
Next is master agreement, Shurri Creek Education Association and the Shurri Creek Local Association of Personnel. Soon as I get a first and second, then I'll go over the material.
Sum up. Second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson.
Okay. Again, first of all, just a apology that this was a late add to the agenda. This is something we had been working on for, for a while here and always at the, trying to get, make sure everything is accurate, make sure everything is in there. Just took us a little bit more time than, than we thought. So that's why it was a late add, but really wanted to get it on the agenda, or agenda for tonight so we would have the possibility, recommendation for this to be recommended and approved before the end of the school year. Again, thank you for both the leadership in the SEA and SLAS on collaboration, professional conversations, and, and working together for the school districts. I really appreciate that working relationship. Just to go through, I'm just going to do some highlights on the, on some of the things in the contract, four or five things. So first of all, the, and some of these will apply for both SEA and SLAS because a lot of times the things will be kind of a twin. Same thing is happening in the SEA contract, will the same thing in SLAS. So again, SEA is our certified staff, SLAS is our support staff, classified. So kind of the first changes in here, the unions, both union membership have opportunities to speak at our board meetings. And so we kind of did a change of giving a little bit more advanced notice to the superintendent and to get it on the board agenda, and then also some discussion beforehand of the topics that may be discussed. The next piece is, next piece is the salary increases for the, for SEA. Again, for, we had a 2% increase to the base with experience steps for the next three years. And then we had compression of steps from 33 to 30, 30 to 28, and 27 to 26. And then also, someone mentioned the five stars in the school district earlier. So when that, when our school district does reach five stars overall, which is, again, the highest rating in the school district, one of eight schools last year in the state that had five stars. Each certified staff member of this will get $1,000 stipend. And then four stars, a $500. Supplemental duty, we added a six-year experience. So right now it was just up to five years. Now they'll, they'll get up to six years. We did clean up some indexes on the specific supplementals, also added yearbook for advisors for BCI and Stephen Bell. I'm just trying to give you the highlights here. We're transitioning, Mr. Lyman will like this, in his treasurer's office, we're transitioning from 26 pays to 24 pays. So we're going to be paying, pay our staff on the fifth and 20th day of the month. And other reimbursements are going to be direct deposit. Again, trying to get more 24th century, but again, a lot more things are going cashless and those kind of things. An incentive for personal leave, unused amounts of personal leave for zero is $600 and for one is $400. We also have been challenged with substitutes in general, but especially as the end of the year goes on. And so we are transitioning from two weeks of personal leave at the end of the year. For exceptions, except for wedding, graduation, school programs, we are transitioning to that four weeks. Again, there's other exceptions that can be made by myself. Personal leave on PD days have to be approved with prior approval by myself. And then if folks do not use, or unused personal leave after April 1st of the, of the school year, they'll receive a $200 incentive, really trying to, to help out the school district at the end of the school year. And then at the beginning of the school, on the beginning of the school year, the first day back from the, from summer vacation, the first day back will be a teacher workday minus 90 minutes of that first day back. So folks have the ability to prepare for any open houses and so forth at the beginning of the year. And then effective with the 25, 26 school year, the first day back from winter break is going to be similar. There's that. And then I'll go on to SLAS, and then I'll see if there's any questions from anybody because some of these may be the same. Our personal leave mirrors the SEA personal leave that I just mentioned, so that is the same, except that if a classification is not offered, PD on those days, personal leave can be taken. Just the normal, the normal protocols for that. Evaluation, so right now there's essentially only two evaluation tools in our SLAS contract, kind of a general one, and then one for bus drivers. So we are working on, so in the agreement, we are working on more specific evaluation tools for maintenance, custodial, lunchroom, recess, transportation assistance, special needs assistance, secretaries, bus drivers, and assistant mechanics, technology specialists, and library media specialists, just to provide some more concise feedback to them that are very specific to those. So that's something that we have until November 1st to work with SLAS on creating those. So if we tried to work on those right now, it probably would have held things up. And so that's something that we can, we can work through, and we'll get done by November 1st. And then for wages for SLAS, so we really worked on year one, we have what's called a modified salary schedule with step movement. So we really looked at other school districts around us and really tried to get more competitive with a lot of our, our classified folks and support staff. And so there were some different kind of adjustments we made in that first year of our, of our salary schedule. And then in year two and year three, a 2% plus step. And then the merit pay for them will be for five stars, $200, and four stars. It's $100 for four stars, and that's in year two and year three. And then also for insurance, so as of right now, if you worked less than seven hours for insurance for that premium rate, you were kind of prorated. So the, the less hours you worked, the more you had to pay percent of your premium. And so we essentially, we found that really challenging, especially with our bus drivers and so forth. So if you worked four or more hours, you pay the same premium as those folks that are, that are full-time. So really hoping that will entice and be some more supportive of those folks that work some part-time in our, in our SLAS agreement. And really, the personal leave mirrors the other, mirrors SEA. So again, those are some high-level overviews and hit the high-level points of that. Is there any questions, comments, thoughts?
I'll just say thank you, echo your thanks to your team, to both union teams. I can't even imagine, I'm sure, a lot of effort, a lot, a lot of discussion went into it. So thank you for taking the time to do that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
A little extra, I'm sure, with everything else that goes into everybody's day. You know, the school board's out of it. We don't, you know, we're not involved at all. We're not part in negotiations. You gave me a call late yesterday, hey, it's in the country. So making sure everybody saw it, making sure, you know, if people had questions, you could answer them. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. And again, a team effort on the administrative side also with Mr. Lyman and, and some other folks. Appreciate that, too.
Okay. Okay. So moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Any other questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to B, High School Credit Recovery. Recommend approval of the 2024 Summer Credit Recovery Program at the high school, May 20th through the 21st. $100 for half a credit, $200 for one credit. Instructors, Jan Topia, at $25 an hour.
Sum up. Second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
All right. C, Textbook Adoption, AP Psychology. Recommend approval of the following high school textbook for AP Psychology effective with 24, 25 school year. AP Psychology, Psychology, Pearson Education, AP Sixth Edition, 2021, as presented earlier in the meeting.
Sum up. Second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson. Questions? Please call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
All right. Textbook Adoption, AP Biology. Recommend approval of the following high school textbook for AP Biology effective with the 24, 25 school year. Titles Biology in Focus, Pearson Education, AP Fourth Edition, 2024, as presented earlier in the meeting.
Sum up.
Mrs. Dorn and then Dr. Pryor. Questions?
Well, I just want everyone to be clear, this is not the same AP Bio book that we discussed last year. This is a brand-new version. In fact, we're kind of glad we didn't get one last year because it was brand-new. I know AP Bio book was brought to the board last year, so, but there was one discussed. And the one particular part of that book that was most troubling to me is not in. And so it is not perfect. There is some stuff I don't love about it that I wish wasn't in there, but like the house, you know. I did compare, there were a couple other Bio books. And I compared the stuff, you know, the part I'm not crazy about is taught. And so I compared stuff that is taught, transcription, translation, the citric cycle, the synthesis between the other books and the book Mr. Reinhardt wants is vastly superior. I, when I was at Ohio State, I, you know, I was a TA for biology, and I taught all that stuff to students using a Campbell book with nearly the same graph, or pictures and diagrams, and they are a lot better. So I see why he wants that. If I was teaching that course, I would want that citric acid cycle diagram compared to the ones in the other books. So I totally get why he wants that book. I think it will be a good look for our students, even though it's not exactly written, as I would want it to be there.
I also really love the citric acid side.
Did you? Yes. That's right in your notes. I bet. Yeah.
I just had a few comments that, I got some questions about, like, why is the board involved in this? Like, before I know it was a building, I understand it to be a building-based decision. But the Ohio Revised Code does say that the Board of Education, we are responsible for textbooks and reading lists. And on full transparency, I was a hard no on the third edition, just simply because I felt like it was shoving an agenda. But thankfully, the new edition has walked it back to where it mirrors very closely what the current book says. And so also, contrary to some comments that were going around, the current Biology book was not out of date yet, so we still had a couple years on that, and Miss Vanos confirming that. But the new edition, the fourth edition, which is what is being brought, is totally different, like Dr. Pryor said. And so while I'm still surprised at some of the things that, that are in there, I wish they weren't in there, I'm choosing ultimately to trust Mr. Reinhardt and his recommendations and to know that, that the piece that we all had an issue is in is not even taught in the curriculum as it stands right now. So as, as an educator myself, I am choosing to trust Mr. Reinhardt's recommendations.
So kind of the comments I wanted to share has already been given, so I'm not going to just repeat. But I will clarify a little bit that I also, although that third edition was not brought to the board for a recommendation, I had the opportunity to review it, and I certainly felt that parts of it were inappropriate. And not just because I thought they were inappropriate, but because they violate our controversial issues policy. That's really how we should be reviewing things, how we should be taking a look at things, is by policy or not. And I think that because we're pretty familiar with that policy by now, there were parts in there that violated it. And as Dr. Pryor and Mrs. Anderson said, I don't know why, I don't know the motivation, I can't guess, but those parts have been removed for the fourth edition, and I'm glad to see that. Also, I choose to trust- Also, I choose to trust our educators, absolutely. I trust our teachers, we have the absolute best teachers. And I'm sure that that trust goes both ways, that it is a collaborative, team effort. And that, I mean, Ohio Revised Code, but also the expectations of everybody else is that the school board does have a part of that. And I appreciate the school board's diligence in talking with Ms. Gann, talking with Dr. Cozad, reviewing the book. I, I think that's how the best decisions are made.
Okay, anything else?
I'll just chime in, that any, any apprehension that may have been felt regarding this issue, it's not a reflection of the, the board's trust in our teachers. I personally, and I've shared this with a couple of folks, I, I have lost some trust in some of the bigger corporate business that has surrounded education. And that's bigger business in general, in our world right now, businesses are becoming political in general. The bigger they are, the more one side or the other they take. And so any increased scrutiny on these kind of things are more of a reflection of the world's attempt to have an agenda, and not that, we're not, it's not an indication that our, our teachers are trying to inject an agenda. I feel like I, I have less trust in some of the big names in, in the world, but in educational corporations, that I feel like I, I need to do a more diligent review. And that is not a reflection, or an insinuation that I think our teachers are trying to inject any sort of bias or agenda into our classrooms.
We'll sit.
And thank you, Mr. Reinhardt and Mrs. Gann, for all of your hours. You met with all of us multiple times, and you really were just open and transparent, and I really appreciate that process. So thank you.
It has been moved by Mrs. Dorn and seconded by Dr. Pryor, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
All right, E, out-of-state travel, marching band, so this is for next school year. Recommend approval of out-of-state travel for high school marching band, Indianapolis, Indiana, November fifteenth, sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, to participate in Bands of America Grand Nationals competition.
So move. Second?
Mrs. Dorn, Mrs. Anderson.
Again, this is a yearly trip that they make, very typical.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, number nine, we already covered earlier with the teachers, so executive session.
Okay, yep. Last items of information discussion. Okay, then I am making a motion that we move to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment, discipline, and compensation of a public employee per RC one-two-one dot two-two, G one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Pryor, is that right? Okay. Uh, please call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
We are in executive session at eight forty. We do not plan at all to take any action whatsoever, but you are welcome to stick around if you would like to. Thank you so much for coming, everybody.